Good afternoon, everyone. Today is Tuesday, December 17th, 2024. It is 4:00 PM. It's a meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Is there a motion to call the meeting to order?
So moved second.
All those in favor?
Aight.
This meeting will be audio and video recorded. Please rise for the pledge of license.
Pledge of license to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Gentlemen, first item on the agenda is an appointment. It's the transfer of a package store all alcohol license from Town Wines, Inc., Antonio Calbera, manager, to Discount Town Liquors, Inc., doing business as Town Liquors. Boomee Caban Patel, manager, with pledge of license and stock. Premises consist of two rooms, a stock and cellar, consists of approximately 1,507 square feet, located at One Middle Road, Cushnet, Mass. 02743. Review of matters presented. Votes may be taken. Alright, so we got a pretty decent sized packet here, gentlemen. Showing the transfer of the business. And the purchaser is requesting transfer of the all alcohol license. Gentlemen, have any questions?
We have a gentleman at the podium, Mr. Chairman. Is this the first time? Does your client have, have they done this before? Or is they?
Yeah, they, um, where is that Rochelle's?
Rochelle's Marketing, Dally, in the night.
They have a Rochelle's Market in Dayton. Right here on line license. My name's Attorney John Meridian from Demakis Law Offices. And they're, they're buying the business. With me is Boomee Caban Patel and Rahul Clark Patel. They're buying Town Liquors. And we're seeking approval to transfer the license, approval of Boomee Caban Patel's manager record, and a pledge of the licensed inventory to welcome trust company as their affiliated transaction. It's a standard business transfer, which will take place, hopefully, end of January, early February, but then the ABCC review of the application. The ones that occur is the one of the closing. Boomee is tip certified, go three to four employees who are tip certified. And they'll use an ID scanner, put in some ID scanner to help combat underage sales. So, um, standard transfer of the business. No change to the store for anything like that. So any questions you guys have about the deal, we'll come up. Gentlemen, have any questions?
I do not, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Kelly?
Is this transfer of the existing license now? Or the license as of January 1?
As of January 1. Currently, um, the current owner, um, I don't have his name right in front of me, but...
Tony?
Tony.
Yeah.
He owns that liquor license until we close in February, January.
So Tony needs to re-up it.
That's on here now. On our list now, so.
Okay, alright.
If any, any messages for him, I can relay those to his attorney.
Now, we're just renewing licenses tonight as well?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
That should be.
We're just, we're just gonna renew it on the, the current name. And he can, he can come get his license. And then when the purchase and sales goes through, it's just a clear transfer fee for your attorneys to handle from there.
Yep. Alright.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aight.
Aight. Thank you very much.
Congratulations, good luck.
You have a, you have a great business over there. I live right around the corner from Town Line Liquors. It's been a landmark in the town of Cushnet. So I wish you the most, um, good luck in the future running that business. It's, it's a landmark. So I hope you can do just as well of a job as Tony's been doing over there.
We have, we have, we will die. Thank you so much.
Thanks. Welcome to town.
Thank you. We are very excited.
Excellent.
We can handle the transfer and then close and contact ABCC.
Alright.
Thank you, guys.
You know what? Have a great day.
You too, thank you.
Alright. A decent lot of stuff in regards to golf. Um, I'm gonna do, I'm gonna take this a little out of order in respect to Mr. Tibbles here. Cause I know he probably wants to get going home. So if you want, Mr. Tibbles, we'll jump right into Golf Bunker bid results.
I think you all know, we had our bid opening in November. We had one company bid. That company was Wheat and Feed DHT Golf Services. The bid came in as requested in two parts. The initial part was for the work to be done on the sixth, seventh, and tenth holes. That bid came in at $137,000. And the add-on or add-alternate, which was work proposed to be done on the third hole, came in at $53,000. This was discussed at the, one thing I should mention before I go to the golf committee discussion is that there are two time periods that, um, as requested in the documents, contractor shall be within five weeks of commencement. Work can commence in the spring, anytime after 31 March, and/or be complete by 27 June. Or the second option is a fall option, which is to begin anytime after 18 August, but must be substantially completed by 15 November 2025. Final completion to occur by 29 November 2025. So this was discussed at the last golf committee meeting on the 5th of December. Discussion centered around cost initially, and secondly, again, around timing. And the golf committee decided that timing would be best in the fall of 2025. And they looked specifically at holes six, seven, and 10, with the third or the alternate add-on being left off or not considered at this time in the scope of work that they'd like to, like to address in the fall. Their discussion also centered on putting a request for funding into an article to be presented at the Springtown meeting. We currently have one article through the Golf Course Enterprise Fund. The residual value, I think, is in the neighborhood of $101,000.
Mr. Jim?
Mr. Gasper?
So when we discuss these, I guess we'll call them bunker replacements from the concrete and different alternatives and things of the like, we were talking back then with you, I think it was somewhere in the realm of $25,000, $30,000 a hole, a bunker?
Well, bunker, basically, yeah.
Right. And if I just did the math correct, which I believe I did, it's pretty simple. $137 divided by three comes out to $45,666. How do we deviate 50% from that?
Well, the seventh hole has one bunker, the 10th hole has two, and the sixth hole has one. But I was giving you the estimate that I had. I don't, I really am not going to be able to give you an estimate based on prevailing wage. As we discussed, I mean, a good portion of this, this proposed bid is approximately, I think Dave Flynn figured out, maybe $9500,000 in material costs plus moving materials. My, I gave you my best estimate. I'm not going to stand here and say that I understand prevailing wage and what the prevailing wage cost is, and whether you need a two-axle driver at approximately $78 an hour as opposed to a three- or four-axle driver, or what their labor charges is or what have you. So, again, it's...
So then we'll, we'll, we'll get over what your expertise isn't. And then we'll just talk about the number that you brought up, what's remaining in that article. Cause I know what's remaining in that article as well. And you're right, it's roughly $101,000.
I think so, yeah.
$576. So with that said, how do you spend $137 with 101 left?
Well, the intent wasn't to spend it in the article. The intent, my, my recommendation, I talked to the golf committee, is this, that you have two ways to go. You could spend what's in the existing article and request additional funding, or you could, they were going to put an article in the town meeting that we didn't have in the fall. So, or we did have, but our article didn't go in because I think free cash wasn't certified or something. That was the way it was explained to me. I don't know, and that, for that particular article. So it didn't get included. They were looking at $250,000 article. So they said in the spring, they would do that and probably request, you know, outline the $137,000 for the project. And then for one or two additional items that they will be considering when they have a discussion at their next meeting in January. So that was, I mean, I looked at it that way. Said, okay, well, if we got that money in the article that we have existing, and you, you know, depending on what else you might wanna do, whether the cart path work or so on, then you'd have to request additional funding to complete the project, as well as do additional projects that you might wanna undertake.
So going back to the remaining balance that's left in that article, $101,000, if they wanna do the work in the fall and have it completed by a certain date, I would think it's probably before we get open or roughly thereabouts when we open. We're not gonna go to the Springtown meeting until at best late May, maybe early June. So you won't have funding appropriated until that's available, until somewhere July 1st? So again, how long are they gonna wait for money to be?
Well, well, if you're going to, the, the idea was to do, undertake the project in the fall of 2025, not do it in the spring. So they wouldn't be, they wouldn't be looking to get, I believe the, the spring dates were, let me find it here.
I think you said March 31st was the?
Yeah, March 31st, and on, to be complete on it before the 27th of June. When we put the bid out, we asked them to specifically give quotes on two time periods. And that, and the quoted price will be carried through, whether you do it in the spring or whether you do it in the fall. The, you know, after discussion, you know, I, the golf committee thought that it would be best to, you know, given the types of weather we've had in the past couple of years later in the fall, it would be best to get through the season, especially more busy portion of the season, without any significant disruption that undertaken in the fall. So as far as money's being expended, you really would be expending any until the, you know, until the initiation of the project, which would be in August at some point. Is that's my understanding?
I don't know if there's a permanent rush to get this done and through today. I don't know.
Well, I, is, work on golf course in general, you have specific areas or portions of the golf course that are, that are starting to exhibit wear. And you really, you know, bunkers usually get repaired every 15 to 20 years, replaced, redesigned, or so have, so have you. So I put, look, they came to me, asked me which would be the predominant ones. I gave them a list. Out of that list, these particular holes were chosen. And I, you know, my point to them was, you're going to have to do this work at some point. And, you know, you can either tackle it in one of two ways. You can do two or three holes a year. You can try to do six holes in one year, six holes the next, six holes after that, so on, depending on how you wanna divide it up. And I told, is, is golf work, golf course work expensive, especially when you have to quote it prevailing wage? And then the need to do that work isn't going to go away. And the prices, I don't feel, are going to get any significantly lower in the future. So if they decide to do the work, this is the way we go. If they don't wanna do the work, that's up to you.
What you're saying, the lifespan is usually 15 to 20 years?
Yes.
So feels like a lot today, right? But if you're looking at it spread over 20 years?
Depends on how many holes we have to catch up on that haven't been maintained or what it is.
Well, it's not so much haven't been maintained, they just, they wear out. People, I mean, you, you can look at them, you know, you could put barbed wire up there and people are still gonna walk up the face. Well, if they step on the edge of the face, it breaks the face down. Then the water, when it rains, it washes it down.
You know, say, there's nothing, I don't wanna say worse, but it's, when you, when you see shoddy bunkers, it's kind of a...
I'd be, no, I, you know, I would admit, if, if asked, what our most troublesome feature is, it's bunkers. Yeah, those are the one things, if, if somebody came to me and asked me what detracted from, you know, your, you know, the golf course the most, I would say the condition of some of the bunkers.
Yeah.
Mr. Kelly?
I'm a little confused. If we're, have an article for an existing, an existing article for approximately $101,000, and we're asking for an article in the spring for $250,000?
Well, that was the number that they originally thought of in the fall. I don't know if that's what they're going to ask in the future.
So if you're going to do it in the fall and the Springtown meeting has an article for $250,000, does that mean that you're not going to use $101,000 for any other project? It's totally committed to these bunkers?
Well, that's, um, to answer your question, I don't know. That's not my decision. If it was my decision, it would have been spent already. But because now's the time to get some work done. But that's up to the committee, what they decide they wanna approve for future work and what they wanna bring in front of you folks to get approved before we spend the money. So, and I don't wanna sound dodging, but I don't know the answer to that question.
Mr. Tibbles?
Yes.
Just for my reference, is there a expiration date on these values, on this IRFP?
Um, as far as I know, that expiration date would be the end of, end of the fiscal, or not, I shouldn't say fiscal, because the calendar 2025. Since you've got that, this price of carry through November, if you decide to do, if we decide to do the project. If not, then I would suggest that if you were to consider it later on or in, in 2026, that you'd have to initiate the entire bid process over again.
Yeah. I was more concerned with, you know, does it expire January 30th of 2025? So, so, you know, to leave any of the questions and concerns my colleagues might have, at least they could sit, we could sit down with, you know, the chair of the golf committee to see what their possible article is gonna be. Roughly $36,000 would have to come from a future article to do this. And ultimately, it's gonna come down to town meeting approval regardless.
Yes.
So what I would suggest is if, Mr. Kelly, if you can get in touch with the golf committee and set up a, a meeting here, and we can start looking at proposed article that they're planning, just to make sure we can answer any questions anybody might have.
And I'm just thinking out loud here. If we decide to go forward with a facility, could we look at this, you know, as part of that upgrade and fold that all into one bond? So we're truly spreading the payment out over the course of 30 years? I don't know. Again, I don't know the finance. I'm just trying to think out loud rather than like exhaust.
I would, I would think when you were getting to the point of coming up with that financing expense scenario, depending on what the number was for the primary purpose of the expense, which would have been the facility, then you could see whether or not you would be comfortable taking that additional funding or requesting additional funding at the same time and floating it over 30 years.
Yeah, I don't know. Right.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of moving parts. We're talking about multiple moving parts. However, there's a significant amount of money in the golf course reserve fund, okay? In the excess of 1.6 million right now. We haven't got anything certified from the previous year closeout, but it looks like that's gonna return somewhere around 300 to 400. So call it two, okay? Let's just stick with the 1.6.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem, we all, I don't think any of us have a problem. We need to keep up with maintenance and things of the like. But I don't think that we wanna be burning out 200 and a quarter of a million dollars every year on maintenance, maintenance, maintenance. And you're gonna burn that money right up, right? So it's kind of something that you wanna look at and say, okay. So I've seen a couple of holes, I think I was out there with you. One of them, I don't know what hole it is. And that bunker is like erosions happening and all that stuff. So I know what it looks like, and I know it needs to be fixed. But we said, depending on the cost, we could do a couple holes a year, whatever it may be. We, we have the money to pay for it. We should just pay for it, right? Because financing, in my opinion, is just a losing proposition, right? You're paying more for something that you're already paying too much for, in my opinion. So why spend more on financing something? I don't know what that borrowing for a clubhouse, whatever. We're gonna get into that conversation, I think, tonight of, what's the expectations of a clubhouse? The cost and everything else is gonna go along with it and the formation of a committee, if that's what's gonna happen. I don't think you take something like that and roll it into long-term debt. I don't think, something that lasts. I don't know what the financing is. So if it's only a three-year finance plan, that might work. But if you're talking five or 10 years on, longevity of your replacement is 15 years, and you're bonding some, which we shouldn't be bonding anymore for 20 years or 15 years, that would just be ludicrous. And I wouldn't advise it at all.
My thought process is similar to yours with regard to financing. Although if you were ever going to roll something in to a financing program, it would be, my opinion is, it would be something significantly larger, like the replacement of the irrigation system, which is probably going to need to take place within the next five to six years. That's a significantly larger, not than, like, you know...
But again, that, that longevity of our irrigation systems already lasted better than 25 years, roughly 25 years. And I know that guy, PGA guy that was in here talking to us, said it's probably something that you wanna keep your eyes on over the next three to five. I made a note in here, right? So probably three to five years. But maybe we, we address portions of it earlier and do whatever we need to do. So all that big cost ain't reoccurring. We don't have to be bonding and borrowing. This, this idea of debt is just killing me, right? It's, it's always, we've always been a community where we wanna pay off the bond for the golf course. We, the Board of Selectmen, extended that debt by out seven years, somewhere around 14 or 15, because golf was kinda going down the tubes. And we said, well, the only realistic answer that we have to get it from 550 principal and interest, we brought it down to roughly 340, 350, right? We knocked a couple hundred grand by extending that out seven years to save the golf course and never put that on the taxpayers' back, right? We always gotta keep that in mind, that if something bad were to happen and things were to take a big downturn, like we seen back then, we don't wanna ever fall on our taxpayers' back. That was, that was what we all did. Golf Committee, management, Board of Selectmen, we've always made sure that didn't happen. We've always talked about buying the town, fire engines and police cars and ambulances, when the bond's paid off, when the bond's paid off. So I'm kinda not too keen on an idea of, let's go crazy borrowing again, so that never happens, right? We wanna give back to the community. I think that should be everybody's goal, is to try to finish that off and give something back. We can easily do a clubhouse, as I talked about before, depending on the cost of whatever ideas come out of. All of us, when we talk about a clubhouse, but, you know, we, we need to spend money repairing the golf course. And 46,000 bucks a bunker is four, so it's a little bit less. It, it's a significant amount of money. I don't know if there's any other way we could be doing this without having these, you know, people coming in, these prevailing wage people coming in. I know we've done some things in the past without it, but...
Well, you've done, you've done individual, a, a single bunker in the past, and we had a, had the shaper come in, do the shaping. And then I, you know, we were responsible for the finished work, sodding and what have you. I will point out that on, especially on a 10th hole, not simply a bunker, the, the approach in the fairway is going to be taken up into and around to the left side of the green. And it also addresses, you know, irrigation work that might have to be moved or changed, depending on where its location is. So that cost, as you were mentioning, you know, doing the math, four instead of three, there's some other things that are added.
Sort of a little bit of reconstruction going on, not just bunker work, right?
Some, some different gradings, some, and then some other constructions as opposed to just shaping the bunker. The other thing you wanna do with it, you know, and I, because I've been asked this before, and, and I've admitted, you know, I've said, you know, I said, I can sit on an excavator and I can dig a hole pretty good. But as far as doing any shaping or anything like that, and being responsible for the proper angle, so when a piece of machinery goes around there, it does a slip, slide, roll, I can't do that. I'm not a, you know, I said, I can dig, I can dig a straight hole to put an irrigation line in, but I'm not a, you know, I can't shave a bunker, put in an approach or something like that.
Just trying to watch the burn rate of our surplus money, right? And we, I talked about that before. Our burn rate's roughly $189,000 a year out of article money, right? That's a significant burn rate. But we have to continue to reinvest in our product, right? To make it better and better, right? Other than that, we won't survive. So I don't know, is the magic number three or four holes a year? You said it's good for 15. I mean, there's 18 holes. You do three a year, in six years, you're all done with the whole golf course, right? And you've got 10 years. We ain't playing around with these things anymore, right? I don't know what that equation looks like. It depends on what the costs go up, right? But, I mean...
And some of, you know, and some of the holes really don't need, I mean, there are some of the holes, like you used the 13th as an example. We don't have to do any shaping on the 13th hole. All we need to do is what, we're gonna be trying to do in the spring, depending on how things thaw out, is cut a new edge on it, remove the existing sand, and put new sand in because the existing sand's been contaminated. When, you know, those types of situations, we can do. It, it's not a big deal. But when you get into, you know, like the bunker on the 10th hole, the face is completely worn out, and to be able to cut in and put the approach in there and then move the bunker down, no, that's a little bit outside of our purview. But, you know, flat bunkers, bunkers, you know, we've been doing it for the past two or three years anyway, edging them and adding new sand. And, you know, we'll be getting into that, depending on what the weather's like in the end of January, beginning of February.
So these holes are the more complex?
Yeah, the work, the work on those is more detailed than, than what was within our purview.
Just for reference, how many bunkers do you think you have on there that can be done in-house, like you just mentioned? And how many bunkers do you actually have?
Um, off the top of my head, I believe, I could count them up real quick, but I believe there's about 59 total. Well, give or take one or two that have been filled in and removed since the last time I did that. I would say probably, of those, there's probably, depending on how, I mean, the committee wants to go forward, because they had requested at some point filling in some of them, which is something we can do. That's not a difficult task, just reshaping the mounding and filling it in. I'd say there's probably, off the top of my head, at least a dozen to 15 that we could probably do ourselves. That don't have, that are basically repairing the, you know, the edging and replacing the soil, and then probably going in in some instances and having to replace the drainage.
Mr. Gasper, do you want to look at, is there fund stuff with Mr. Kelly and the golf committee?
I think they, I mean, we only have 101, right? So I need approving stuff when you don't have the cash on hand, right? That's usually an issue, right? And it, and it's always subject to town meeting vote and approval. And if something were to happen, I don't wanna be, do, if we, if we approve, Steve, I mean, you can't be signing this thing, cause once we sign it, we're obligated to give it to this guy. And then we're bound by it, right? So I mean, I don't know what, you know, what you, how you balance that out. I mean, I don't have a problem. I mean, you got three holes that need to be done, and it's a lot of reshaping on one hole, or one green, or whatever it is. So it's a little bit more extensive work. And I don't expect, you know, Steve and his maintenance crew And I don't expect, you know, Steve and his maintenance crew to be out there doing all of that stuff. But if it's stuff that he says kinda outside the scope of his expertise, you gotta take him in at his word, right? The problem is the funding sources just aren't here. And we don't know what the future lies in, you know, golf committee saying we're just, now we want that. You know, we've been going through a lot of article money and hey, let's get a quarter of a million bucks. Pretty soon your reserve, your two million bucks is gonna be down to a million bucks just like that. And that's not really what we should be doing when we're talking about trying to build a clubhouse and put down a big payment on a clubhouse so you're not financing for more than three to five years, I would say, max.
Yeah, I, as far as financing or dollar and cents terms go, I mean, I would look at, I think what we need to do at some point is consider our annual profit. At, you know, what it might be at any particular time and determine a percentage of that that should always go to whatever you wanna call it, rainy day contingency fund. And the other percentage of it that you can spend on some of these projects. So like you said, you're not financing, but you're still putting money away. It's like your regular home budget, I mean, you know, it's times I have to spend my whole paycheck on bills, but at other times I take a portion of it and I put it away so correctly can spend it on something else later on down the road.
You'd have to, we'd have to, which, it's not hard to do, but I agree with your philosophy is if you just like, opportuarily speaking, because it's a seesaw, right, depending on the sport. Let's just call it 300 grand, which is being very optimistic, it's not always 300 grand, right? We've been lucky with rounds of golf and how many we've been putting out. But say it's 300 grand and you, like you said, take 150, 50% of it, put it in your reserve, but then make a plan, a business model saying we're gonna use 150 of that to reinvest in the golf course so it ain't these constant hits out of your piggy bank, right? I mean, it's so easy to figure this out and make it work in a financial model. It's not that difficult to do as long as you put the right minds at it and think about these things. We could be very successful with that golf course. And the return on our investment, if and when we actually do get a clubhouse, a real one, like I've been talking about for over a decade, now your profit margin every year is going through the roof, right? You're guaranteed to make more profits if you have a real facility where you're actually selling. You have a little buy area, a little lounge area, whatever you wanna call it, food and beverage, real food and beverage sources, right? I mean, we did basic math years ago, Dana was standing up there and I told him if you got it to 10 bucks around, you'd be generating another $200,000 a year just in your food and beverage line item. And that was well over a decade ago, right?
Oh yeah, I used to, before I grew grass, I was the food and beverage manager of the private club. So I know how much money can be made.
Right, right, and think about that though, right? I mean, it's just, it's just profit that you never had, but now you have it and then you're just taking that and you're reinvesting a portion of it, right? And then you keep a nice kitty off to the side in case you have a bad couple of years, like we did back in the 14, 15 era, we had to go and extend that bond out to help save the golf course. So, I mean, I'm fine, I mean, we don't have much of a choice, we need to do some bunker replacement. I just don't know how we do it without having, you know, a finance option there. I don't know, do you have in your budget a line item that could carry the remainder of that? If we blew the 101, the leftover of that article, right? It's the last article that's open for golf.
Yes, that's the last one.
You did that, do you have 36,000 bucks somewhere in the budget?
I, well, I could find it, you know, and again, I'm not gonna stand up here today and commit to you because I don't know how the weather's going to be for the, in March and how early we're going to open. But I just did my, my payroll estimate for Jan, actually December 15th through June 30th. And I'll, you know, because I didn't bring in a second assistant, which was included in that budget, I'll probably be sitting on about $30,000 in excess in the payroll budget. Given the calculations, given the weather, working the people the same hours they work the past year and all that.
And so you could manage it because it'd be a few thousand bucks off to manage.
Yeah, and I think, and I don't see now, I mean, we've spent a portion of the $37,000 in the capital line item. I don't have my laptop or I could tell you exactly how much is left, but I don't see any significant expense that would draw that down any lower than leaving approximately $10,000 in there. So I mean, yes, I mean, can I commit to it and tell you exactly right now that it was there? No, but I would estimate that that difference could be made up.
Oh, you just, so you just, you struck a nerve and made me start thinking about your budget. And I wouldn't advise doing it too early in the season, but we carry 100,000 in a reserve there as well for emergency and unforeseen things, right? Costs, right? So that 100 grand that we carry, we don't normally spend out of. The golf committee's not authorized to spend it, nobody, except for this board is authorized to spend it. So we could do something with that and say if we need to pull 10 grand from that 100, we could say we could pull 10 from that reserve and make it 90. If we close out the year, we don't have to dip into it for anything else. We could carry that at the end of the fiscal year, come June 1st or whatever. We could say we're gonna pull 10 to make that hole and award that contract, right? To get, to make sure that we have this person in here in the fall. So there's ways we could do that without stripping too much from that reserve. I mean, that's, that's something that we don't wanna make habit of doing. It's there for emergencies, God forbid if prime time season you had the irrigation system or a pump system blew up, that's what that money's really there to cover, right? Because we can't get to a town meeting in time. So, I mean, it's just another way to skin the cat if you need to get this project behind us, it's a way to do it. So, I mean, whatever, I mean, it seems like we're gonna get it, get it done. I mean, just, I don't, I don't think that I'd be willing to do a fourth hole as the alternate one, that's for damn sure. You gotta be cautious of how much we're spending, but be disciplined, but I don't.
I'd be, I'd be okay with the base bid, I mean, it's four bunkers that it is and be all right with that. Would this be better, Mr. Kelly, to sit down and see what Steve's budget would allow so we can put this together? I, I just don't wanna do a blanket motion right now, this is pending this.
Well, I think because, you know, again, there's other aspects of the budget that are basically online and, you know, within, within the spending realm. It just all depends on what Mother Nature decides to do in April, May and June. I mean, if it comes, I mean, if it gets wet in March and April, then it starts to get hot and everything's soggy and you might have to tap into a little bit more of that pesticide budget than you originally planned. So that fungicide budget, so. But I think there will be, you know, there will be, you know, funding there, I just don't know how much, I mean, I can estimate, but I don't know how much in actuality.
So in some years, and I've been doing it for a while, watching golf and enterprise funds, in some years, some of the so-called, what we would call profit, wasn't really profit. It was returned back because you never got to your budget, right? So your budget's roughly 1.7 million dollars and you've kicked back anywhere in some years, only $50,000, some years in excess of $100,000, right? That you haven't spent out of your budget, right? So there's, there's excess money there as well in the budget. So at the end of the fiscal year, you could see where you're at in your budgets and say, this year we're probably gonna kick back, you know, 75, 100 grand, whatever it is to close of last year. I know we don't have a town to come, but all of that's playing into it and I'm sure that we'll have the same thing that happened in the past fiscal years.
Well, I'm pretty tight on, because I keep, I keep my budget running on a weekly basis. So I know how much, you know, every invoice that come in, comes in, I post to it. I post it and subtract, so I know pretty much how much is left in each particular area.
But at the, but at the end of the year, Steve, we're allowed in the last 60 days of the fiscal year.
After May what?
We can shuffle money in between the departments, right? Even where it comes to salaries, right? So we have that flexibility that we can shift in the last 60 days of a calendar year is what I'm saying. So there's, there's ways to do this without going after our reserve fund.
So, is there a timeframe that be, since you're deciding to do it in the fall, that the contract has to be executed by for this person to put supplies in?
I don't believe that was specified in the contract, but, you know, it's odd how you only, only got one bidder because you probably got the best person to do the job out of anybody else who could have been someone who's been doing it 35, 40 years, who's done quite a bit of work in and around New England. So, I mean, and I, I know the individual fairly well, I mean, I could call him and ask him because he'll have a, what he'll do, what he'll be doing is he'll be looking at additional projects and so on through the course of the year. And he's probably got himself planned out a year, he usually plans out a year, year and a quarter, year and a half ahead. So if we don't get in, if we don't let him know by a certain time whether we can, whether we're gonna go into that slot, he may stick somebody else in there because he's gotta keep on making money.
And is there a time that we have to execute the contract for him to buy supplies, et cetera, to do it within that timeframe?
I, you know, I wouldn't, you know, because he's in that business, certain of those supplies he keeps on hand. But, you know, as far as sand, you know, those other materials, I think if you're a month, month and a half out, you don't have any problem getting those in. I mean, you know, Reed Sand and Gravel, where we get quite a few of our products from, is right down the road. And I mean, I can, we can get materials in readily and have them stockpile however he wants to do it once he gets, gets underway. I don't think the material acquisition would be a problem, just as long as he has the timeframe with, you know, notified with a timeframe that he doesn't sit there and say, I just can't hold out any longer, I gotta fill that gap because I wanna keep everybody working.
That's correct, you're gonna get bumped out of his queue.
Yeah, you're gonna, you're gonna get bumped out of the queue if we don't give him enough of a, an idea of what we're not gonna commit.
I think when Steve was in here, Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, please, when last time he was in here talking about bunkers is they're limited, that kind of work is limited to a certain time of year. Like they're not, they're not, they can't be there in July and August ripping up your bunkers because that's where everybody's playing.
Yeah, nobody, nobody wants you to strip.
That business model has a, has a smaller window, it's not a 12-month business model, right? He's got other things going on, I'm sure, within his, within his business. But he's focused in on doing golf courses in a short window of that calendar year, that 12-month year. It narrows down to maybe five months.
Yeah, he does, he does sports field work, he does car path work and so on, so you're correct.
So, or if we're doing the work in the fall, is there a drop dead date that you know that he has to be told? Or we lose our place in the queue?
I, I personally, I don't know that. You know, I can call and ask and I'm, you know, like I said, I've known the gentleman for 25, 30-some years. But I personally, right now, I can't say what that date is, I'd have to call him and find out. The other thing is, you know, is if you wanna get, you wanna get in the queue, the other thing you wanna do is you wanna get started right about that date because a lot of things come together at the end of the year. Like, you know, if we do that and we, you know, we commit to the project, we finish it the 15th or the 29th of November, I'm not turning the water off November 4th because I'm gonna have a lot of sod and a lot of grass to water. So I might not turn the water off until the 7th.
And we can figure this out. I don't, I don't think that this is something that we should even, you know, we're hopscotching around right now. I mean, I, there's always concerns about money, but I think that we've talked enough about the budget and everything else where we can come up with payment on this. So it's work that needs to be done, you gotta get this guy scheduled in here to just check off that box. That's my opinion only, so I'm fine with approving it. Steve, I will say if the board does approve tonight, I'm not so sure I would run off with our signatures and hand it off. You could just let him know, yeah, things were approved, but you know.
Yeah, I'm not, no, I'm not gonna jump the gun.
You said you have a good relationship with him, right? So he can even watch the film, we approved it, right? But we need a little bit of time and wiggle, we don't wanna lose our spot.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, he's done this, and he's done this with, you know, a lot of municipal golf courses. I mean, he does quite a bit of work for the Boston Parks Department at Franklin Park and George Wright, or next to William Devine, I'm getting them mixed up. George Wright and Franklin Park are the same place, well, William Devine's the other course. So yeah, he's, he's a very easy person to work with, so.
I guess we could say, is there a motion to approve the base bid RFP with the stipulation of verifying additional funds?
Sure.
So, all those in favor?
Aye.
And if you could find out that information for Mr. Kelly, if there is a drop dead date, like he said, it is approved obviously and we'll sit down and we'll take a look at the books and see if we can make this easier than what we just went through.
There's plenty of options on the table, we just better that out.
All right. Replace 12-year-old spray machine.
Yes, this actually came up about a year and a half ago. We have a Smithco sprayer that we picked up in November 2011, which is showing its age and certain aspects of it are starting to, starting to go. The central controller, which controls the booms, the actual valves that release material once you turn the booms on, as well as the braking system in the rear, one of the rear tires. So I spoke to golf committee about this, they requested that I get a quote to repair. The Smithco as opposed to purchasing the new sprayer. I went to our Smithco distributor, got the quote from them, their quote to do the repair work that we requested. Now, given this repair work was to make this machine last for another five years. It wasn't just to fix a few, you know, a few things that weren't working properly. So that quote came back at approximately $71,000. $61,000 of it was in parts, $9,800 of it was in labor expenses. So I had, we had contacted Toro at approximately the same time that we purchased or proposed the purchase of the two greens mowers back in August of 2023. They gave us a price on a 300-gallon sprayer, which is, and they, although unfortunately that sprayer wasn't going to be available for a year, year, two or three months. I contacted them when I got the quote back from MTE and they said the sprayer couldn't be available in April. So I'm back to the committee and I said, listen, it doesn't make much sense to spend $71,000 to repair a 13-year-old machine when you can get a new machine for 75, 450, which is gonna last you at least 10 years, probably 12 years if you take care of it. So this was discussed at the last golf committee meeting. And of the members there, they, it was the approval to come to you folks was given. And they proposed a five-year dollar buyout on this particular unit. Five-year dollar buyout at an annual cost would be 87,700. The price if you were to buy it straight out is 75,450. So again, I spoke with Toro. The problem I have with the, the existing sprayer is that we can't, you know, to, to get it up to snuff, I mean, I can get it working for another year without a problem. I'm gonna have to spend, you know, 10, 15,000 dollars on it, which I might not have in my parts and repair budget. But the issue here is that this is a, this is a primary sprayer for greens. And, you know, having our luck at some points, this is not something you want, you know. If a fairway mower goes down, I can get by with it using one. I'll cut five, fairways five days a week. This machine goes down, you know, and it's, you know, 85, 90 degrees out, the humidity's 87% and I need to go. And usually it goes down with about $4,000 of material in the tank and I've got nowhere to put it because I can't use the machine. So this is a, this machine not only is a applicator for pesticides, but it's also used to apply liquid fertility products to greens, teas and fairways, as well as soil amending products such as seaweed extracts and calcium products and magnesium products. Usually goes out anywhere from one to three times a week depending on the time of the year. So.
How many sprayers you have?
We have two. We have the John Deere and we have this one. The reason we have, the reason we have two is because we renovated, renovated an old one. But we have 29 acres of fairways and with starting times early in the morning, I can prob, with one machine, I can get four holes, maybe four holes sprayed before I get caught. And then once I get caught, then my spraying for that particular day is done. So instead of taking what would be a one-day application with two of us on two, 300-gallon machines, we have to spread over across three and a half days. And usually at some point during that three and a half days, the weather changes. Our particular problem here is you get past nine o'clock in the morning and the wind picks up. Wind picks up over 10 to 11 miles an hour, then you, I stop spraying because my material isn't hitting the application point even though my boom is only 18 inches off the ground. And again, you know, especially in the busy months, you know, you lose a day, you actually lose a week because you're pretty much booked up with outings and other things where you can't get out there and you can't, can't apply. And I know some places don't adhere to this. I'm not going to belabor the point, but technically speaking, golfers should not be on the playing surface until the material dries and leafed. That's not gonna happen when you get caught, so that's one of the other reasons why you stop. You can't, you know, and you can't really be out there applying. At least, I mean, you can apply wedding agents and other things because they're not, they're not of issue with, with the state. But when it comes to pesticides, you can't be applying pesticide materials in proximity to, to golfers on the golf course. So I put this out in front of the golf committee and said, you know, this is what, again, it's like any other piece of equipment. I presented it to them, I said, it's, you know, your decision. It's my job to recommend to you what needs, what you need to do. And then, you know, then I get feedback from you and then we move forward. So that's where we sit with this. The machine is available. If, you know, if we don't take it, I'm sure they have somebody else that'll go to. But given that, I mean, you know, to get back in the queue, you're probably looking another year, year and a half. And you're probably looking at, I'd say about five or six grand in additional cost. One of the issues with the sprayers now is that they're starting to get away from. One of the issues with the sprayers now is that they're starting to get away from this type of sprayer, which is a manually operated machine, manually operated by the operator. And people are going to, and a lot of the companies are going to GPS-operated units. GPS-operated units are in excess of $90,000, plus you have to pay a $3,000 a year, approximately $2,500 to $3,000 a year subscription so you can utilize a satellite to bounce information off of. So I thought this would be a good opportunity to, to replace that and extend the, the quality of the spraying and also give us more flexibility because now we can, with that, we can continue the program of upgrading our liquid fertility products on our fairways and getting better, better stamped turf for our customers.
$71,000 to replace, repair the Smithco?
Seems ludicrous, doesn't it?
Yep.
I'd believe that. I'd have to see what's going on with that machine, but.
Well, like I said.
The machine didn't sell for that brand new, right?
No, brand new back in 2000, I mean, I could check, but I think back in 2011, the machine was somewhere right around 50, that one. The new one, I mean, because I said, okay, you know, I'll play along with you. Give me a price quote on the new one. Well, the price quote to replace the Smithco, like we had it, came in at $89,000. So I said, well, you know, I like the Smithco unit, but I don't like it $13,000 or, you know, $14,000 more than the Toro.
Do you ever buy a refrigerator or a washing machine these days? It's, you know, it's more money to replace, to repair the damn thing than it is.
Oh, yeah, but I know I can buy a brand new pickup truck for $70,000 or less and this is a sprayer, for Christ sakes. I mean, what is this, made by Cadillac?
Well, unfortunately, you know, to go buy a new rough mower is $85,000 plus. A new fairway mower today is, is $75,000. And, you know, this is with, this is with our discount because this machine MSRP listed $80,673. So we get a 21% discount. So just on the machine itself, knocks it down to 63. Then, of course, like any other thing, you know, you have to add the other things like the boom. You know, you think if you would buy a sprayer, it would come with a boom. Well, no, that's an add-on. It's just like buying Tri-Flex. It doesn't come with the reels. You have to buy the reels and add them on to it. So, you know, and foam marketing and what have you.
Mr. Gasper will have you out with a backpack and just pump in, you know, some rounds of...
Well, I've, I've done, I've done that in spots, but spot spraying here, there, that works, but.
18 full greens might take a little while.
Yeah, 145,000 square feet would take quite some time. I mean, right now with the, it only takes me, it takes me two hours. So if I, you know, the other thing that would enable us to do, if for some reason we have an early start time, then we could split the two in half. The only problem is that most, more often than not, you want to cut before you spray. So you have to get the, you have to get the, the operators out there at 4:30 in the morning so you can turn that tanker and be spraying at 5:30 so it dries on the leaf blade before the golfers start at 7:30 or 8 o'clock.
So again, I like the idea of leasing and there's no funds available to purchase right now. And I, I personally, well, I want, I want a little more time to look into this old, this 12-year, 10-year-old machine, look at the condition of it and see what I can figure out because I have a lot of time to leave it at $70,000 to rebuild the machine.
I did too. I mean, personally, be quite honest, I mean, the parts prices were, you know, were legitimate. But, you know, I think, I think they may have looked at it and said, do we really want to undertake this or not? Because it's quite a bit of work, you know, and then what they'd have to do is they'd have to pick up the machine, take it back, you know, take it to their service department and do it. So I think there may have been a portion of that, you know, would have tried to make you, position you towards a new one as opposed to.
Of course, that's the game.
That's the game.
Well, you know, everybody plays that game.
Oh, yeah.
As somebody that comes from the repair business, it boggles me that parts alone can be $61,000. I just can't wrap my head around it.
Well, it's, you know, they, they started, the controller is around $4,000. The braking, the braking system in the real, in the rear, rear brake is on the one, on the one side because we repaired, we repaired the, the one side ourselves and we came, we came back and the seal popped again, so we had to do it a second time because the, the seal kits aren't, aren't what they're made out to be. And then again, it's, you know, it's the, you know, the, the machine itself, the transport unit is okay. I mean, the diesel engine's fine, but, you know, you're talking about the, you know, the apparatus which allows it to spray, the valves which open and close. You know, I can tell they're, you know, they're, they're failing because when I turn the boom off, if I look back, they're still dripping.
Yeah.
And that means that the valves aren't, aren't shutting completely, so. Like I said, I mean, I bring this to their attention, I mean, and this is what I think needs to be done. If, if for some reason we can't do it, that's, you know, so be it. Or if we want to wait, then I'll have to talk to Toro and let them know, so.
Same thing. I mean, if we don't approve this tonight, it's not going to be the end of the world, right?
Well, it's not going to be the end of the world. I just don't know how long they're going to hold it, so.
If we do it, next meeting in January.
Let's, I mean, do some due diligence for crying out loud. I mean, this is, this is, this.
Well, I've done my due diligence.
I'm, I'm sure you have, Steve. I'm not going to question that, right? I'm just, I'll come down like I always do. I come down and see you and look at equipment and I've been in the repair business for a long time, right? Sometimes things can't be repaired internally and we don't need to go out and have somebody else do it because again, like you just said, with the bunkers prevailing wage, right? We got a mechanic on hand if there's certain things.
Well, I mean, the, yeah. The majority of this, you know, I mean, Norm can do quite a bit of this work, although if he were to focus simply on this machine, it would take, you know, three or four weeks to get that work completed and then all the rest of the machines would be sitting there. You know, right now, we're grinding reels, replacing bearings, replacing seals, you know, draining hydraulic fluids, replacing hydraulic fluids, fixing, fixing roller bearings and other things, you know, in order to get all the rest of that equipment ready to, you know, to go out probably the last week or fir-, you know, third or fourth week of March and start cutting. You know, we've got a, a smaller window and, and that's why we look to have them do that work because we just didn't, it just didn't fit into the, you know, the program we're working on to get everything fixed.
Right. So I think what we'll do, Steve, is if, give us a little bit of time to.
Yeah.
To go through this.
I mean, that price isn't going to change, like Mr. Warner said. I mean, it's not, you know, it's not going to change between now and, and January, February, so.
All right. Cool. So we'll just hold off on this for now.
Yeah.
Do our due diligence and we can jump back in after the first of the year.
Okay.
All right. I think that's all we have from you here, right, Mr. Tibbles?
Yeah. I think so.
All right. Just making sure we don't have any other questions.
Have a good night. Drive safe.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I'll come down and see you.
I don't believe you have a meeting before Christmas, so have a nice Christmas and nice to you.
You as well.
You as well. You're around the rest of the week, right, Steve Downing?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I'll come down to see you.
Yeah, the only thing I take my guys out.
Make sure you send me a sandwich this time, right? I always get, I always get there too late.
Well, I mean, you could come to lunch with us on Friday if you wanted to. I take my guys out for Christmas lunch on, on Friday. But, yeah, I'll be there tomorrow. I just got, I got physical therapy, so I'm, I leave a little bit early, but you're usually there around, right around lunchtime anyway, so.
Right, just, I'm always a little late for that lunch.
Yeah.
Thanks, Steve.
Yeah, we'll see you after.
Isn't that breakfast where you're going?
I get crabs in this water.
All right. Seasonal part-time pro shop hire, Lori Handering.
I would ask that be passed over.
Okay.
What is that?
It's, everything's been done down at the golf course and nothing's been done in town hall.
What do you mean, though? What needs to be done?
Interviewing, talking, making sure all the i's are dotted and the t's crossed.
I'm concerned, I guess, I don't know why you put it on the agenda. I mean, this is a surprise. It would be good to know what the, if there was an issue beforehand.
Yeah.
I know, I don't understand.
Yeah, and I, I'm looking at this as, I've been hyping up Dana having a pro shop position for years now, so.
It seems pretty rudimentary. You got a person who has stellar background with.
Except to the board.
Working at a, at a golf course in the area.
Two golf courses.
Two golf courses. I don't have an issue with it, quite frankly.
I don't, I don't know enough about what was just coming in, so.
Yeah, I mean, my personal opinion, I've been asking Dana and I, as somebody, as a seasonal part-time pro shop position since I've been on this board, and every time that he's had it. I don't have a problem with it.
Town administrator will step back.
I'll take a motion to appoint Lori Handering.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Want to get to the unfortunate part of this meeting? Gentlemen, I'm sure you read through this. Mr. Ed Isaac has offered his resignation from the Golf Advisory Committee. Ed has been on this committee since inception, I believe.
Before?
Before, beforehand. Town truly owes Ed an extremely large debt of gratitude for putting a lot of his time and effort into this golf course. And sad to see him go, but I definitely appreciate everything that he's done for this course. Gentlemen got to work with him a lot longer than I did, but I can say in my short term here, Ed's been very consistent and very, very communicative. And I'm going to miss him and I appreciate everything he's done.
Mr. Isaac is a extremely intelligent man, as some of our other golf management committee members have been there for over a quarter of a century, working on behalf of the taxpayers and free of charge all those years, right? Just an extremely intelligent businessman. He's done a bold load for that golf course. I mean, he's, again, he's an individual that will not easily be replaced, right? He will be missed. I get it. I've spoken with Mr. Isaac. It's, it's unfortunate, you know, but he feels it's his time to go. It's his time to go. I wish he would have stood on for a little longer and hopefully been able to see this, if the new clubhouse gets built, it would be, I think, a tremendous effort. I think when this clubhouse is built, and even though he's not going to be part of it, is maybe we could take into consideration some of these long-term committee members and their commitment to that golf course and making sure that's never fallen on the taxpayers back as they have for over a quarter of a century. Maybe name a room after them.
Yeah, absolutely.
In honor of them.
Yeah.
So.
I agree.
Think that would be something nice for some of our long-term golf course committee members that have spent a good portion of their life dedicated to that golf course, right?
Agreed.
And seeing it from start to end. And we're almost done with that debt. So to Ed, congratulations on all the work you've done for that golf committee and you will be sorely missed, Ed.
I feel the same way and got to know Ed from the beginning of that 1998, when that course first opened and for better or for worse, it was Ed who introduced me to golf with Alan and Katina. I've had many a good time on the course and many frustrations, but thank you, Ed. Really appreciate it and the service to the town has been impactful.
Gentlemen, this point, I would take a motion to accept the letter of resignation from Ed Isaac with deepest regrets.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Kelly.
I too will miss him. He has been a great source of information and support. And being as it may, it was Mr. Isaac who reviewed all the bills of the golf course before they came in for processing. And I would ask that this board ask the golf committee who will now perform that function.
Sure.
Absolutely.
All right. Next item, just kind of piggybacked on that one. I will state, there's no absolute replacement for Ed, but we do have to put somebody on this committee. And I, if you guys remember correctly, the last appointment we had, we had a couple of candidates and this gentleman was actually one of the first people to reach out and he's re-engaged. I asked him if he's still interested and he's actually extremely excited. Had multiple conversations with him and I feel that he'd be an asset to this advisory committee. And if you guys have any questions or concerns, he is willing to speak with you, but I would take a motion to appoint Neil Downing to the Golf Advisory Committee.
The, the only comment that I'm going to make is I've read through this letter and I'm just reading it again. It does talk about his son being a bad boy. I don't know if there's any conflict there, far or not, being on the golf committee, making financial decisions, so.
You just have to, gentlemen, as you recall, we went through that process with me and I had to declare that, so I just wanted to make sure.
We will have to have him talk to the town clerk.
I just want to make sure that, you know, if we're going to make that appointment, that he's not compromising his family.
Absolutely.
So with that said, I'll make a motion to appoint Neil Downing.
Second.
All those in favor?
To the Golf Management Committee.
Aye.
All right, we'll jump back to a heated gentleman. After speaking with Pam, if you notice, I didn't put any appointments for this facility, Golf Facilities Exploratory Committee. After speaking with the town clerk, we felt it was in best need to compose a committee, then appoint. So at this point, all the people in this book that have suggested they want to be a part of this, I didn't even bother looking at yet. I've skimmed through it and I, I know a lot of the candidates, but at this point, this is more for reviewing what this committee is going to do and actually forming it and what the composition would be. In other words, how many members? So with that being said, per discussion with the town clerk, I don't want to appoint anybody to this tonight.
So, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Gasper.
If somebody could explain exactly what is, I know we've kind of put a exploratory name on a, on a committee, but what is, what are the duties of this additional committee going to be? Because we have us, the ultimate decision makers. You have golf management committee that are second in charge on doing things. I know they've already met with, I think, engineer or something through an RFP process to start the conversation about building a clubhouse. So what is the exploratory committee's mission going to be and how are we going to set them on that mission? If this is going to be created, what are we, what are we asking that committee, exploratory committee, to do it as a function of what we have in place?
Mr. Chairman, I'm more than happy to, to dive into that since I proposed it.
Sure.
Is, I think, to provide us with, with recommendation, recommendations on where the town should go vis-à-vis a clubhouse, facility, whatever, right? And I felt that, yes, we have a golf management committee that's been doing it for a long time and has great expertise. We have the board of selectmen that has different viewpoints, but I felt like to get a fresh set of eyes and then also to sort of get more create, more community engagement. I think it would be up to us to set the charge for them, to say, look, work, the, the golf management committee is, is hire the architect. Work with the, with the architect, bring your perspective on what the committee could handle, you know, what the course could handle, what we would look at as ways of generating revenue with, you know, hospitality, what, so on and so forth. And I think by opening up this process, we can see we've got some really impressive people in the community that, quite frankly, have more experience than most of us do in, in this golf world. I mean, look at a guy like Rich DiPrado, you know, Wayne Lovasso, Jeff Fabians. There's a lot of talent there that I think we should tap into and this is a good opportunity to do that. Ultimately, we set the rules, what we're looking at. It could range from, you know, a stick build, a modular build. There's all kinds of models out there and, you know, this is going to take. There's all kinds of models out there, and, you know, this is gonna take a lot of time and effort. And one, having a committee dedicate to that job only, and then when the job is done, the committee dissolves after recommendations are made for us to decide on what the next path would be. But it's very labor-intensive, and I don't know that this board has the time to do it, given everything that's going on, and the Golf Management Committee as well. So that is the mission and the intent.
So where's the Golf Management Committee sit in the process?
They would have, they would have an ex officio member to help guide the committee on, you know, help them along in the process. But again, it's to get a group of talented people who can provide some insight, who can provide some recommendation, you know.
So are we gonna set, I think that somebody needs to set some parameters to this advisory committee, right?
Yeah, that's us.
Like, you know, kinda saying, you know, we're not looking to build Taj Mahal. This is expectations of dollars, so they're not thinking, oh, let's design a $5 million. Then they come back to us and waste all that time and say, well, we're only looking to spend $2 million to $2.5 million, right?
Yeah, I think that's like.
I think that's kind of the basic model. Just say, hey, this is, you know, square footage-wise, we don't wanna be, give some expectations from us, so that when they sit in a room collectively, they can just remember what was said to them and say, we gotta stay within these parameters?
So when we put together these committees, when we put together these committees and we appoint the members, we bring them in and we, what they call recharge them with the responsibility. And we can all say, like, you've already said, like, I want a basic model. Bob may feel like, eh, maybe I want a little bit more of a basic model. Maybe I'm thinking something else, whatever. But collectively, we decide what we want. We give them the parameters, and then let them go cook, and they come back with recommendations. I would ask them for multiple considerations, you know. And then we work with the Golf Course Management Committee to ultimately make a final decision on what we can afford, what's appropriate, what we need, not what we want, so on and so forth. So it's been done before, and I think we can do it. Kinda like, almost like what we're establishing for the master plan, right? It's setting a vision, and then when their job is done, the job is done. And we can choose to accept one of the recommendations. We can choose to throw it out. We could choose to do nothing. But I think it's a worthwhile exercise. And based on what, who submitted the level of interest. Initially, I was thinking like five. I think you could go with seven, and really tap into some talent. And then if we decide to build, you could take some of the folks who were not appointed and help, and have them serve as the building construction committee to oversee the implementation, the construction, and, you know, sort of a team of clerk of the works, if you will, to ensure that things are done properly and things are moving on time. It's kinda the same model that we did when we did the school expansion. It was a feasibility committee, and then we had a construction committee, you know, to oversee the day-to-day. So that's the vision.
Yeah, and I don't think this is in any way or shape looking to insult the Golf Committee at the moment. I think they do a fantastic job. I happen to like the idea of involving the town a little bit more on stuff like this, because ultimately, people that play golf know what they wanna see at a golf facility, so to speak. I just want this to be clear that ultimately, just so anybody's listening, this is an exploratory idea, and it's not binding. We have the ultimate authority to decide what this is. And I think making sure that the current Golf Advisory Committee sees matters before us is important as well, because I think that ultimately, working hand-in-hand with them is just as important as working with us.
Hundred percent. And I mean, look, I love every member of the Golf Course Committee. What they do for the town is amazing. But over my, over the last five years, six years, I've heard from numerous people that wanna be on the committee, that wanna be involved, that wanna have an impact and help out, and absent turning over the Golf Management Committee to create opportunity for somebody else, this is, you know, a unique opportunity to do that. And, you know, of course, it goes without saying that the Golf Management Committee there is ultimately there to manage the committee. This is to help move a process along.
We still have some time anyway with the putting out, like Mr. Gasper said, putting out exactly what our expectations are. So I also would like a little bit more time to review members, but I'm okay with, you say, seven?
Yeah, initially, I was like, all right, well, maybe it's five, but, you know, given the talent pool, I think all these folks, people are adults. I think they can all play nice in the sandbox and move, you know, come up with a good product. And, you know, maybe perhaps having a committee of seven, they can create subcommittees and really drill in, because we're gonna ask them to really move quickly on this, not to be, you know, cut corners. But we don't wanna waste time waiting for some type of recommendation, because if we need to make, if we make a decision and then go to town meeting in the spring potentially to ask for funds, and if not then, then it's the fall. You only get two bites of the apple, and every day that goes by, we gotta, we got a bleep hole over there right now that's, you know.
Right, so I think, I agree. I think it needs to be expedited, right? And get the committee, the newly formed committee. Look, they can have a joint meeting with the Golf Management Committee, right? And see where they're at, where they've been at. Have an introductory to whoever this RFP person was that came in and started doing the discussion, keep Golf Management in the loop, but they got their day-to-day stuff to be dealing with with golf and all the other decisions. And set the Golf Exploratory Committee off and keep bringing things back and forth between the two committees. I think that's the best way to do it. A lot of work together and in sync with each other, and then say, okay, this is what we think would be in the best idea for the town of Acushnet. I think that's all that we're looking for them to do. It's a basic, don't keep bringing up business plan, but I mean, proper plan and prevent piss-poor performance, right? So I mean, if you have somebody else additionally in planning and say, look, this, I like this about this, well, I'll just say the name, Resi, right? And I like this about blue sky up in Bridgewater, and, you know, this, this part of that works, this part works for them, and we incorporate a little bit of that building, this building, the other building, and then this is what we want, and then put it all down, and then after that, you're gonna have to have an engineer come in and do all this stuff, and then you hire out a firm to build this thing, right? I mean, that's how it's gonna be, and then they can just be abolished at that point.
And I would say, I don't think 120 days is by any means like too short of a timeframe to think this out, but I think you go.
I was thinking 90, 120 myself.
No more than 120 days, so people understand, like, this is.
Get the word.
Right? And then by April, we can come up with an idea of what we wanna do, and then we can move this thing forward. So that's the plan. Mr. Kelly.
If you are charging a committee, a charge is usually in writing, and it usually sets the boundaries of where they're going. So the question is, do you want that on the next agenda?
So here's the thing, Mr. Chairman, when we, I'll be more than happy to take it on, provide some feedback to Mr. Kelly on what you would like to see done. I'm more than happy to try and draft something with feedback. And then we can approve that and appoint people and get this thing moving. Ideally, it'd be great to get this thing up and off the ground after the New Year.
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be okay with, after, we get our first meeting in January, I think we can, we can, that'll give us enough time to dive through these really deep and determine what we wanna see as residents of this town and so-called stewards of this town, and put together what we think is good. Mr. Gasper, you okay with seven members?
Yeah, well, it doesn't matter to me. I mean, you're looking at seven, four is a quorum, right? Doesn't matter.
All right. All right, is there a motion to?
With a representative of the Golf Management Committee to serve as ex officio, so it's not, it's just a, you know.
Advisory committee. All right, so how do we get around that motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to form the Golf Facilities Exploratory Committee, set it at seven, with a representative of the Golf Management Committee serving as ex officio.
In addition to the seven?
In addition to the seven. So the ex officio has no voting rights or any of that. It's just to help provide guidance.
Advisory capacity.
Conduit between this committee and the Golf Management Committee.
Sure. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, I'm gonna jump to annual license renewals. All right. We're going through common vic and every other licenses. We do this every year. We're gonna start with the common vics. I have Country Whip 1173 Main Street. Is there a motion to approve the common vic?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Seafood Hut, 2 South Main Street. Is there a motion to approve common vic?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Rochelle's, 590 to 594 Main Street.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
TC Donuts, Dunkin' Donuts, 150 South Main.
So moved to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The Mill, 156 South Main Street.
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Gasper, how about you make the motion, I'll second it.
Okay, boss. It's just, I'll do it after.
Gentlemen, this next one, a little bit of a different motion. Captain's Place, 162 South Main Street. Is there a motion to approve the common vic license pending final approval from inspectionary services?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Just so you know, that would have to be done no later than January 1st.
December 30th.
December 31st. Right, American Legion, 71 Hope Street.
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Cam's Cuisine, 132 Main Street.
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Century House, 107 South Main Street.
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Blue Point Restaurant, 6 Dayton Street. Is there a motion to approve the common vic license pending final inspectionary approval to be completed before 12:31?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Blue Lantern Cafe, 605 Main Street. Is there a motion to approve the common vic license pending final inspectional services before 12:31?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
VFW Post, 7239, 28 Roosevelt Street. Is there a motion to approve the common vic license pending final inspectionary services done by 12:31?
So moved. Second.
Ponderosa, 242 Robinson Road. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Rivers End Cafe, 7 and 1/2 Tarkin Hill Road. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor? JT's Pub, 77 Slocum Street. Is there a motion to approve the common vic pending final inspectionary services by 12:31?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
You can do the whole group now. They're all the same, all of these, you can just bang them all. Key Sorcher, 1149, Acushnet Creamery, 264, and they would just approve them all.
A quick question on this real quick. Key Sorcher, I believe, we should not renew common vic considering they closed.
I don't think they've officially revoked their business license in town last year.
Did they pay to renew it?
No, they, just no one's paid yet.
Just hold it.
We'll hold that one for now. We have Acushnet Creamery, 264 Main Street, New England Farms, 158 Main Street, Acushnet River Valley, 685 Main Street, Pope Park, 122 Main Street. Is there?
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Silverbrook Farms, 930 Main Street. Is there a motion to approve pending pay?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
By December 31st.
By December 31st. All right, all alcohol club licenses. American Legion, number 265, 71 Hope Street. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
VFW Post, 7239, 28 Roosevelt Street. Is there a motion to approve pending final inspection by 12:31?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. We'll take the next four here for all alcohol licenses with the stipulation. Captain's Place, 162 South Main Street, Blue Point Restaurant, 6 Dayton Street, Blue Lantern Cafe, 605 Main Street, and JT's Pub, 77 Slocum Street. Is there a motion to approve pending final inspection by 12:31?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Cam's Cuisine, 132 Main Street, Century House, 107 South Main Street, Rivers End Cafe, 7 and 1/2 Tarkin Hill Road, Ponderosa, 242 Robinson Road, and Acushnet River Valley, 685 Main Street. Is there a motion to approve all alcohol licenses?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All alcohol package stores. Scuttlebuck's, 590 Main Street, Chuck's Liquors, 2, 172 South Main Street, Bondville's Market, 142 South Main Street, Town Wines, 1 Middle Road, and Liquor Palace, 270 Main Street.
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Wine and malt package store, New England Farms, 158 Main Street.
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, restricted music. We have American Legion, 71 Hope Street, Cam's Cuisine, 132 Main Street, Century House, 107 South Main Street, Rivers End Cafe, 7 and 1/2 Tarkin Hill Road, Ponderosa, 242 Robinson Road. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Also under restricted music, VFW Post, 7239, 28 Roosevelt Street, Captain's Place, 162 South Main Street, Blue Lantern Cafe, 605 Main Street, and JT's Pub, 77 Slocum Street. Is there a motion to approve the restricted music license pending final inspection by 12:31?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Automatic amusement. American Legion, number 265, 71 Hope Street, Rivers End Cafe, 7 and 1/2 Tarkin Hill Road, Ponderosa, 242 Robinson Road. Is there a motion to approve automatic amusement license?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Automatic amusement license, VFW, 7239, 28 Roosevelt Street, Blue Lantern Cafe, 605 Main Street, JT's Pub, 77 Slocum Street. Is there a motion to approve an automatic amusement license pending final inspection by 12:31?
So moved. Second.
He didn't. He has too many papers.
Really?
I don't think anyone wanted this. There's something in that book. Did he say he didn't want his renewed?
He dissolved his business license, so we won't have that in the, is that on there?
Yeah.
That's on, it's on the list, but I thought I seen on this one that he didn't want to renew it.
Correct.
No, I'm sorry. I forgot to take that one out.
Is that right, yeah? Just continue. Whites, whites.
Whites still.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right, class two license used cars, Repwell Corp., 734 Main Street, Hay Street Auto Sales, 3 Hay Street, Ted's, 308 Middle Road, South Coast Premium, 127 South Main Street, Shawman Auto, 118 South Main Street, Murray's Auto Sales, 75 Lambert Street, South Main Street, Enter.
Enterprise.
Enterprise, 60 and South Main Street. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Class three junk license, Repwell Corp., 734 Main Street, Ray Sales and Service, 4 Morton Lane, LaCock Auto, 1256 Main Street, Fred's Collision, 36 Slocum Street.
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hammer.
It's not on here, and I know this has been a source of contention for us, but the property down at South Main Street, which has more junk on it than probably any one of these places that we approved, there's a junkyard. Can we get the Board of Health, the Conservation Agent, and the Building Inspector to go over there and take a look at that place? Because, you know, every time I go by there, it seems like there's more and more stuff being added. And I know we've been trying, this is going on for three years now, and we keep hearing, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, but what's going on over there cannot be allowed.
Agreed.
I mean, there's gotta be violations. I don't know which ones, but it's just from either Concom of stuffed oils and.
Built, built it and sent them a number of.
This is getting weird.
Notices of violations of the bylaws, because that's not an allowed use in that zone.
Correct.
So it's more of a building thing. Concom, we gotta be careful, because Concom. So it's more of a building thing. Concom, we, we gotta be careful because Concom, they, they only have jurisdictional rights where there's weapons and things like that, right? So we gotta look into that. But I think, you know, Board of Health and Building Department needs to at least look at that and say, what's going on?
And if the clock is ticking, if we issued letters saying that they're in violation, I think there's a, a non-criminal disposition of a hundred bucks a day or 300 bucks a day or something.
It goes to a, a progressive fine schedule.
Yeah, this is, this is out of control. You can start, it starts at like a hundred bucks and you go all the way up to 300 bucks. And, you know, I mean, we, we've got plenty of letters on file. I don't know why, um, you know, where Mr. Babola's at with that individual, but.
The last time I spoke with him, um, he had made some progress, the owner of the property had made some progress with clearing out. And as, as you mentioned, it looks like more stuff is up front now. The last conversation was they were pulling stuff out, getting rid of it and pulling stuff out. But I will have a conversation with Mr. Babola, um, to verify that is the case and see what the status is.
And if we can bring the, the gentleman in here for a meeting? I mean, I don't know. Jeez, I, I feel like over the years, people have been getting their chops busted for lesser offenses, right? Like by different departments and agencies, so.
I believe there was some, uh, family members that are handling a state involved in it as well. So, um, once I talked to.
Does it really matter? A property owner's property.
Not my problem.
I mean, I, I agree with Suckamona. There's been other people for less offensive things getting their chops busted.
Yep. And I'm, I'm by no way trying to juggle this. I'm just kinda throwing in.
I mean, there's all rack of telephone poles in the property now.
I did notice that today.
Right? I mean, and like, and they're brand new poles, right? So now it's the, the drop zone.
Yeah.
And, um, it just, it does, it definitely needs to be cleaned up.
Correct.
There's a lot of concerns from the residents in that neighborhood who have been for quite some time, so.
Yeah, hundred percent.
And you've got the, across the way, the Mobile Home Park, which has made some really nice improvements, you know, so.
Absolutely. All right. All right. Gentlemen, next item on the agenda is Council on Aging Building Use Fee waiver request from, uh, the Girl Scouts. I had a extensive conversation with Ms. Golda at the Council on Aging. Um, the Girl Scouts is a, a new Daisy troop that's being formed, new troop being formed. So, um, with that in consideration, I did mention to Lauren that they're a new troop trying to grow their membership. But we also discussed that it would be unfair to waive the fee completely, um, to the other groups that are currently there. And if it's okay and pleases the board, Lauren and I came up with an idea of freezing the fee until March. And after that, matching with the Boy Scouts pay, which is $200 annually. And Ms. Golda was okay with that. And I did reach out to the Acoustic Girls Scout Troop leader to also mention that. And it seems to be okay and agreed upon. So if that's okay with you.
Fantastic. Second. That's what I wanna hear. Motion to approve freezing it?
Until March.
Until March.
And then.
And then working out a plan moving forward.
Perfect.
I'll leave it to Lauren, Council on Aging Director.
Yep.
To notify them when that all expires and everything else.
Correct.
But trying to help out these little Girl Scout troops and, you know, fundraising efforts and everything else. I mean, it's a great program.
Yep.
For our young children. So kudos to them.
So that was a motion. Do I have a second?
Second, yeah.
All those in favor?
Yep.
All right. Perfect. And I'd like to use this moment to say thank you to Lauren for really putting together a very good building use policy, but also being capable of understanding some hardships sometimes and moving forward on that. So thank you, Ms. Golda. All right. Master Plan Committee, composition and appointments. So very similar to what we just did, but we do have some members that have showed interest. Before we get started, I do want to let you know, if you'll notice, the top position here is listed as the town planner. I had some concerns with having two planning board members and a town planner on here. I did speak with Victoria about this and I told her that I don't feel comfortable until I hear back from Town Council, Serp Ed, and, um, our, what was it, Jamie, our advisor?
As far as, uh, because it could involve grants.
Correct. Um, and Victoria understands that. So I would ask that we do not appoint the town planner at this moment, but we can form the committee. Um, this is just something I threw together. I think, right now, I have it with nine members with three alternates. Alternates being non-voting members who can participate and can only vote if a member of the committee cannot be there. Um, and I've done some reaching out. Obviously, we have two people that were on the planning board. Um, I have somebody from the Board of Health, somebody from FinCom that was interested. We also have a citizen-at-large that's reached out after this was posted, along with a member of the Conservation Commission after this was posted. Um, but if that size of a committee is okay with you guys, I would recommend that we form a master plan committee of nine members with three alternates.
Yes, so moved. I remember. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And what I'd also like to, knowing that we don't have a full board yet, we can appoint these, we'll have to appoint at our next meeting any additional members that we have. Um, and also if anybody is interested as an at-large resident of being a part of this, please send a letter of interest to the Board of Selectmen. I would say, gentlemen, do I have a motion to appoint Stephen Boucher from the planning board to the master plan committee?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion to appoint Peter Giampa from the planning board to the master plan committee?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Gasper, you're okay with this? Is there a motion to appoint Kevin Gasper from the select board to the master plan committee?
So moved.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
I guess I'm okay with that. You didn't step back quick.
Yeah, you didn't follow.
I was reading another letter from Orioli in the back of the book, to be honest with you. I didn't know we were doing this, but I thought it was just a talking point, but okay.
Uh, is there a motion to appoint Dave, David DeVignan from the Board of Health to the master plan committee?
So moved.
And is there a, oops, second of all those in favor?
Aye.
And is there a motion to appoint Peter Benoit from the Finance Committee to the master plan committee?
So moved. Second.
Excellent. All right. So that's it for appointments for that tonight. Um, I will keep you posted as it progresses. And then after that, I guess Mr. Gasper will keep us posted as it progresses.
I'll listen.
Oh, uh, old business, financial policy. I sat down with the union, um, with ASME, which is the last union in review. Uh, Mr. Kelly, what did you think?
There are two minor word changes, very minor. It was actually grammatical. And, uh, uh, we have to then circulate that final draft through all three of the unions. It'll pro, uh, one of them's already approved it. So the question is, it'll probably be before you, uh, when you set your first January date.
Yep. Well, yeah, very minimal. Like Mr. Kelly said, it was grammatical in nature.
I would've known they needed to sign off. I would've had them do it when I was in the room with them. We had to wait until the last union came in, you're gonna tell you.
Yeah, and the last, the last.
Just in case they had drastic changes, but.
Right.
Yep. All right. So we'll deal with that.
Can you just forward that off to them and have them?
He's already okay.
Sign off on, right. Sign off on it, Joe, and have a nice day.
Yep.
Uh, Selectmen announcement.
I'm sure we're all gonna say this, but I wanna say it as well to our residents. I'm gonna say Merry Christmas, not Happy Holidays. Merry Christmas to everybody. Um, and hope everybody's safe and has a chance to spend time with their family. And, um, so Merry Christmas.
All right. So Happy New Year, cause we will be back. We'll see you next year. Be safe. Remember to have a DD, Designated Driver, if you're planning on being out after midnight. Have a good time. And as Mr. Wonas said, enjoy your family and your friends over the holiday season. Be safe.
I don't think I can say any more than that. I will second my colleague's message. Um, have a great end of the year and a wonderful beginning of the new one. For most of the world.
See you next year. So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.